Yes, 4:02.
Well, we may a couple more minutes and see if we have to 4:05. How's that?
Sounds good.
And we have received word from Supervisor Fowler that she will be joining us around 4:10.
Okay, thanks.
Have we heard from any of the other supervisors that they can't attend?
Uh, no, I've not. Okay Supervisor Vasquez is in the attendance.
That, okay.
You can pull him over to panelists, please, Claire.
Oh, we do have a quorum county manager. So, and I hate to, if we have people who are here, I hate to use, take their time. So why don't we just proceed if that's okay?
Your bet.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you so much for being here. As you know, this is our second meeting to discuss Board of Supervisors redistricting here in Coquenino County. And first and foremost, I want to have a shout out. Happy St. Patty's Day for many of us who have Irish relatives. This, this is a day of remembrance for them and a day of celebration. So hope you're all wearing the green. I've got some green on today and hopefully you're all, oh yes, and in our, our county manager is wearing the green as well, as is our deputy county manager, Sue Brown. So my name is Patrice Horstman. I am the supervisor for District One. I am also the Chair of the Board. And I have with me here today, and if you would like to just say a greeting of hello, I know Supervisor Begay is with us. Supervisor Begay, would you like to say hello?
And I think you are. It's nice that you're with us today, this afternoon, and we hope that we get some good comments and comments for us for consideration, and that's the main focus of this event here. So I just want to say thank you to Steve, your staff, Trey, and others, you know, my colleagues. Thank you for, you know, getting this going. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you Supervisor Begay and Supervisor Vasquez. Would you like to say hello briefly this afternoon?
Sure. Hello, everyone. Welcome and thank you for being here. We look forward to a good meeting to get as much public input as possible to help guide some of these decisions. So again, thank you for your participation. It is crucial when making these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Vasquez, and I, I know that Supervisor Fowler will join us here as we get going. So she'll be joining us soon. And Supervisor Ryan, is he with us yet?
Yes, he just appeared, so.
Good Supervisor Ryan, would you like to say hello and a greeting?
Happy St. Patty's Day. That's what I'll say to all those special people, even if you're Irish just for a day there. So I want to just say hello to everybody. I, I hope we have an opportunity. If you're not doing it today, at least take advantage and provide your input. We're really curious from our board level to really listen to you. We want to listen. We had a different experience when we watched the IRC. We were listening to you and it's important to get public comment. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Ryan, and, and thank you all for being with us this afternoon. As you know, this is a public meeting. This is a time to provide input on the five redistricting scenarios that we have before us. Every 10 years, we have a census, population census in this country. And so it is time every 10 years to review and reapportion districts based on population. We have a constitutional mandate to have districts of substantially similar population. That's within a 5% deviation plus or minus. By the way Supervisor Ryan, for some reason, you're taking up the whole screen. Is that true everywhere or is it just on mine? I get to see you personally on mine, I guess, so.
Man, I'm sure you might have speaker view on or something, but gallery.
Double check that. So, oh, he's gone. That little leprechaun left. I don't know what happened to him. So anyway, the, there are five scenarios. These five scenarios each meet the required population requirement of that plus or minus 5%. However, these five scenarios each have different lines that are drawn that certainly affect the boundaries of each of the supervisory districts. You can go online to the Coquenino County website for an interactive map for you to review and to study. And as you have heard the other supervisors state, now is the time to hear from you. The board is here to listen only. We're here to learn from you and get your input. The board will not provide comment or answer any questions because of course we have our very knowledgeable and capable staff with us today that will present the five scenarios and will also answer any of your questions as we receive your comments. Comments can also be made online. We have an email and you will hear just a few minutes on how you can access that email and make your comments in writing online. Please ask your friends, your neighbors, your acquaintances, people you run into in line at Safeway and Bashes to please join us. We really do, as you heard, want to hear from you. The board has in fact adopted criteria for redistricting. This criteria is consistent with the constitutional mandates and also is the criteria that the governing board, your Board of Supervisors, believe that we're important in adopting these scenarios. They are as follows. The districts of approximately equal population with a plus or minus standard deviation of 5%. Number two, does not dilute the voting strength of language and minority groups. Number three, preserves communities of interest. Number four, compact and contiguous districts that do not split voting precincts. Number five, maintain traditional geographic and political boundaries. And number six, maintain the existing districts to the extent possible. And number seven, consider current incumbent residency residences, I'm sorry. And last, does not create a substantial long-term negative effect on any party. At this, at this point, I'm going to turn this over to the county manager, Steve Peru, who will introduce the staff and the team here today and have them proceed, provide some up, some overview on our redistricting scenarios and then receive your comments. So again, thank you all for being with us this afternoon and Steve, please take it away.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. Also with us in addition to staff is our county recorder, Patty Hansen is with us as well, so.
Very good.
I want to acknowledge her presence. Also, the staff of GIS and the county manager's office, the elections department are all here as well. And so let me proceed through the slides and I'm hoping you can see the first slide, which is the title slide. Okay, let me go on to the next slide.
We can, we see them, Steve.
Okay, good. Next slide, the chair just provided comments and supervisors introduced themselves. I'll cover the legal framework, the chronology, the background, and we'll also be talking about the mapping guidelines that were adopted by the Board of Supervisors that the chair referenced. Quick view, a review of the mapping scenarios that are located on the website and we'll do a quick show tour of the website. And then from there, the review of the submitted public comments and, and will be provided to everyone and then protocol for public comment and public comments and then adjournments. So I'll proceed with this. So as the chair indicated, the Board of Supervisors are responsible for creating the district supervisory districts pursuant to guidelines established by state and federal law. In addition, and this is my view, you know, a new, a new learning for many. The Coquenino Community College District also utilizes the same exact district boundaries as the county Board of Supervisors. And so while we're doing the mapping today for county Board of Supervisor purposes, the district board for the community college is also adopting, will be adopting the same, the same information. Census wise, from the 2020 census, the population for Coquenino County was 145,101. And then by doing the math of dividing by, by the five districts, we have a target population of 29,020. And then as we apply the 5% plus or minus, the maximum size of the district would be 30,471. And then the minimum range would be 27,569. Also want to call to your attention the bottom of the screen, the, the location of the website, so coquenino AZ.gov slash redistricting and our email, redistricting@coquenino AZ.gov. Chronology wise, September 2021, final data was released by the US Census Bureau. From there, it was then used to, to adjust precinct boundaries to streamline the administration of elections. And that happens at the county level and, and we do this based on Arizona revised statute. And this process had to be done before October 1st of 2021. Want to go back up to the first bullet though. The final data released from the Census Bureau of September 2021, it was about six months, if not longer, delayed as a result of COVID. And for all of us, and it was all of us who experienced COVID and are experiencing COVID, a lot of processes were delayed. The census was, was, was a big, of course, massive project and initiative that happens every 10 years and that was delayed, which has basically, and which has had an impact on, on a lot of our deadlines. So I want to call your attention to that. While we adopted precinct, some precinct adjustments in October 20, of, of October of 2021, the, the Independent Redistricting Commission, which is the state of Arizona's version of redistricting, they were beginning their work related to the legislative and congressional boundaries and those lines. Well, of course, that process took place even before October, but went through December of 2021. During this time, the county, we paused and delayed our process as a result of that because that, when, when the Independent Redistricting Commission is doing their work, when they lay down the legislative and congressional lines, that basically provides in some cases for, for some precincts to be split. And so we had to make adjustments based on the Independent Redistricting Commission's work. And so we paused during October to December and then we restarted back in, on January of this year, 2022, in looking at review and revisions of scenarios. February of 2022, the board adjusted, the board adjusted precinct boundaries to reflect the independent redistricting commission's district lines. March virtual public hearings, which we're doing now are occurring four times in, in March. And then this will all roll up into April 12th, when the Board of Supervisors will be adopting a mapping, a redistricting map that will serve as the redistricting map for the next 10 years. And again, those boundaries are also utilized by, by the Coquenino Community College District Board. Again, the redistricting process occurs every 10 years. The census data is used by states to create legislative congressional, we just spoke about that. And then counties utilize it at the county level to, to create a redistricting plans that comply with constitutional and federal mandates. And I also mentioned that the community college utilizes the same districts. Arizona revised statute, ARS 212, the Board of Supervisors shall meet at the county seat on or before December 1st, following the release of the decennial census to divide, to, to divide the county into three or five supervisory districts as provided in this article and of course shall be numbered one, two, three, et cetera. The board shall define the boundaries and limits of each district and make the division equal or, or with no more than 10% in, in variance in terms of population. So again, the plus or minus 5%. I highlighted the, the date, December 1st. In a normal year, this process would have been done, the process we're doing right now, would have been done by December 1st and then as a result of that, the boundaries would have been set and the maps would have been effective on January 1st. That has not occurred this year as a result of the delay in our scent, with our census process. And so that's why things are a little out of whack as, as we look at statutes. And so this, the Arizona Legislature did create a special law that provides counties additional time, the extension, I think goes into June of this year for counties to create their redistricting plans. But again, in a normal year, we, we would have done this by December 1st. On the federal side, the one person, one vote, the equal protection clause demands no less than substantially equal state legislative representation for all citizens of all places as well of all races. By holding that as a federal constitutional requisite, both houses of the state legislature must be apportioned on a population basis, meaning that the equal protection clause protects, requires that a state make an honest and good faith effort to construct districts in both houses of its legislature as, as nearly of equal population as practical. And so again, going back to, to what the chair mentioned, in addition to state law, we have federal law that guides our actions. And of course, this being an important law that we follow and abide by as we're putting together our redistricting plans. In addition to that, the Voting Rights Act of 1965 guides the administration of election to ensure that, that everyone in our nation has the equal opportunity to, to cast a ballot. Section 5, a couple of sections within the Voting Rights Act, I want to call to your attention. A section 5 was enacted to freeze changes in election practices in covered jurisdictions until the proposed changes were determined to have neither discriminatory purpose or effect. Arizona and Coquenino County use a covered jurisdiction. So that means that anytime our county would be changing any process related to the election and in this case, the process we would be changing would be our maps. In the past, our maps would then be submitted to the Department of Justice, the United States Department of Justice, where they would review all of the information, the data, they would look at, at previous voting, voting activity and participation to, to basically verify that our plan did not have any kind of negative impact as is, as indicated here on the slide. And again, that was in, that was in place up until 2013 or a few years ago, when the section 5 portion of the Voting Rights Act was held at the Supreme Court to be unconstitutional. And so that portion of the Voting Rights Act of, of went away, if you will, which meant that while it has been gone, while it's gone and we don't have to pre-clear our election changes, we do have to abide by section 2. Section 2, as you see here, no voting qualification or prerequisite to voting or standard practice or procedure shall be imposed or applied by any state or political subdivision to, to deny or bridge the right of any citizen of the United States to vote on account of race or color. And so section 2 applies to, to Coquenino County and the entire state of Arizona, meaning that while we did not have to send our changes through section 5, we still must abide by section 2 of the Voting Rights Act. And you can see the citation here on, on, on this slide for that requirement. Guidelines for redistricting, as our chair indicated, were adopted and you can see here the date stamp here, March 22nd of 2011. Now, these were adopted, of course, back in, in 2011. These were pre-cleared by the Department of Justice at that time. We have re-adopted them for 2021, knowing that of course they do continue to, to, to work and, and guide our actions. But they've also been pre-cleared in the past. So we would assume no changes would occur. And, and you'll see the first one in terms of drawing of districts of equal population based on census and the deviation of 5%. Number two, do not, to not, do not dilute the voting strength of racial language minority groups. Preserve the ability of majority minority districts to elect representatives of their choice. When considering the ability of districts to elect minority representative, voting age population should be considered rather than just census population numbers. And we do have voting age population data that we're including in our analysis. Preserving communities of interest. And, and the question was asked, well, what is a community of interest? And, and really, there's not a, a very complicated definition of community of interest. It's a community of interest is just a group of individuals that, that have a common interest. And so the, the definition is intentionally broad, leaving communities a lot of discretion in determining which issues are important to them and those issues that bring them together. So community of interest is an important term. But again, it is broad for the purposes I just said. Districts must be compact, compact and contiguous and we use census block boundaries as district boundaries so that we do not split precincts. We maintain traditional geographic and political boundaries. And number six, we do not create a substantial long-term negative effect on a specific political party. Political parties should have a fair chance to influence the political process. Seven, base the new plan on existing districts to the extent possible. And then finally, when drawing district boundaries, take into account current incumbents. Our maps are available on our website at coquenino AZ slash redistricting. And I'm going to take this opportunity very quickly to open this up if I can. And I don't know that I can. Well, we'll come back to it in a moment, but I'll, I'll go through the rest of the slides. Public comment. And so for those of you who are here to join us to, to participate in the conversation, you can use, use the raise hand function or chat function to ask questions on Zoom. If you're on your phone joining us, you can do star nine to, to, to be activated, to, to be activated. You, we ask that you state your full name and address and you limit your comments to three minutes. And then also you can submit public comment anytime on our draft maps up until April 12th of 2022. And comments may be mailed to redistricting@coquenino AZ.gov. Public input sessions after today, March 23rd and then March 29th. And again, where you can mail information, email information to us back on the sessions, the 20th Thursday will be at 6:00 PM and the 29th at 2:00 PM. And then more information as we just indicated on the site and the redistricting. So again, I believe those are all the slides. I'm going to, I'm going to stop sharing my screen. And come back to full zoom. And I'm going to turn this over to, now we're going to proceed with going over the mapping scenarios and I'm going to ask Sue Brown Deputy County Manager and also our GIS staff will pull up the mapping scenarios, Nate and Helen on the, on the shared screen portion. So and Nate is doing just that.
Yes. Thank you County Manager Peru. For those joining us, this is the tool that you can access via the website. And again, that's coquenino AZ.gov slash redistricting. This is the tool that you can bring up. You'll see the map, the current map with the current supervisor districts in the different colors. At the top, you see District 5. To the right, District 4 in the middle is District 2. Then District 3 in the green, as is appropriate for the day, and District 1 in the middle. So, and then on the left-hand side of the tool, you will see the demographics. And if you want to, Nate, can you show them how to click on it and they can see it closer? There you go. So as we go through all of the scenarios, the five scenarios, again, this is the current district boundaries. You can see the total population of each one of the districts. And you'll note with that that there are two of the districts that are actually overpopulation and two of the districts that are underpopulation. So District 1 and District 3 are overpopulation at this time because of the census change, census numbers change. And District 4 and District 5 are underpopulation. So that's why we are, we are redistricting. The next column is total population in each, each district at this time. And you'll see the different, the different designations for the population, non-Hispanic white, Hispanic or Latino in the purple, American Indian in the green, and then other, no response in the gray at the bottom. Those are from the census. Then the second column is, excuse me, third column is total voting population in each district as well. And the same designations as we go along. And then finally, the last column is registered voters by party affiliation for each district. And the blue is Democrats, the red is Republican and the gray is other in that. You'll also see these lines that go up and down on each one of them. The line as it stands at the end of the bar says where they, where it was originally. And then you'll see as we go through the, the new scenarios that the line will stay where it was and you'll see a new line, line drawn, excuse me, line drawn as we go through it. And that's better, we'll be able to illustrate it better on the other scenarios. But this is the current demographics for the supervisory districts. And Nate will go over and start with the first draft scenario, which is scenario C. So one of the crazy things about this tool that our GIS staff has built into it is you remember we spoke, the chair spoke and also County Manager Peru spoke about those guidelines that we're following. And those guidelines you can see right at the bottom under the demographics. So if you need to remember what those are, as you go through it, you can see that here. So in this scenario, we call it scenario C, you can see that the supervisory districts have changed quite a bit. And what we're going to do to show, to demonstrate each of the changes that have happened on each one of these, these maps, we're going to go through the precinct changes. So for super, for scenario C, the first change is that supervisor, excuse me, precinct 8 in Flagstaff will be moving from District 1 to District 2. That's precinct 8 in Flagstaff. And you can see Nate has his cursor on that precinct right there. It is in the East Flagstaff corridor. The next one Nate will be District 7, excuse me, precinct 17 Flagstaff. That one is currently in District 2. So there you see it. And that is also on, on north of Route 66. Precinct 617 will go from District 2, it will go to District 4. And you can see that in the purple is District 4. Next Nate, we have precinct 18 Flagstaff that also will go from District 2 to District 4. Thank you Nate. Next one is precinct 23, which was in District 3 and is now showing in the scenario in District 2. The blue indicates District 2. So that's another move. Nate, we're now going to go to precinct 41. Was in the current scenario, and the current districting was in 4 and is now in, under this scenario, going to be in District 2. That's precinct 41 in Blue Ridge. Thanks Nate. The next one Nate will be Cameron, precinct 43. Was in District 4 under this scenario, would move to District 5. Thanks Nate. Next one is Fernwood Nate. Under scenario C, precinct 52 in Fernwood would move from District 2 to District 5. So Fernwood. Then Nate, we have 53 Forest Lakes. Precinct 53 in Forest Lakes would move from District 4, where it is now, to District 2 under scenario C. Then we're at Grand Canyon Nate. We have District 59 in Grand Canyon under scenario C would move from District 1 to District 5. That's precinct 59 in Grand Canyon from District 1 to District 5 in this scenario. Then we go to inscription, inscription house Nate. Here we go. Precinct 61 in inscription house would move from District 5 to District 4 under this scenario. Then we go to Mormon Lake Nate. Precinct 63 Mormon Lake. There we go. Will move precinct 63 Mormon Lake would move from District 4 to District 2 under scenario C. Next one Navajo Mountain. That's precinct 71 Navajo Mountain. Will go from District 5 to District 4. And there are two others. The first one is precinct 81 Ranches North, North Nate. That one. Just one second to catch up here. Wait till the numbers pop. There it is. We're 81 Ranches North, that's the precinct. Will go from District 1 to District 3 under scenario C. And finally, the last change that this, this particular scenario has from the current map is that precinct 84 Ranches South will go from District 1 to District 3. Great. 84 Nate, not 81. There we go. 84 Ranches South will go from District 1 to District 3. Great. So from there, after we've talked about those, we'll go over to the demographics and you can see the changes under scenario C in the demographics. So the first thing we'll check is the first row of column which shows the target population. Do we make target population? You can see on the bottom of each one of the boxes, it shows the target population and you can see that all of the districts do fall within the target population deviation of 5% above or below. And it does cover that. The next thing you'll see in the next column is total population for each district. And that's where we look at the lines. The lines at the far right will show. And that's where we look at the lines. The lines at the far right will show where they were. And you'll see where the bars are now under Scenario C. Uh, same thing for each one of the bars. Great. Thank you Nate. And you'll see some populations go bigger and some less. For total voting population, you will see the same information for each one of the categories. Some more, some less. And then finally, you will see the registered voters, voters by party affiliation. Some more and some less with the lines at the far right showing you the changes. They may have gained population in each area or lost population in each area. Great. Thank you Nate. And then you just click out of that. And then we move to the next draft scenario, which is D One. Thanks Nate. And in this scenario, you can see. Thank you. We'll wait for just a second. Let it come up. There we go. You can see in Scenario D One, the District Two stays mostly in the center of the map. For this one, the changes that we're going to find begin with Precinct Eight in Flagstaff. There we go. It is going to change from District One to District Two under Scenario D One. The next change is Precinct Eighteenth in Flagstaff. That will go from District Two to District Four. There we go. The next one is Flagstaff Nineteen. That will go from District Two to District Four. And then Flagstaff Twenty will go from District Three to District Two under Scenario D One. The next one, we're going to go to Cameron Nate. That one will, Precinct Forty Three in Cameron will go from District Four to District Five under Scenario D One. Then Fernwood Nate. Precinct Fifty Two in Fernwood will go from District Two to District Five. That's Precinct Fifty Two in Fernwood goes from Two to Five. Then we have inscription house Nate. Precinct Sixty One in inscription house will go from District Five to District Four. Great. Thank you. And then we have Precinct Sixty Three down south Mormon Lake. Precinct Sixty Three at Mormon Lake will go from District Four to District Three. Then we go back up to Navajo Mountain Nate, to the north. We have Precinct Seventy One Navajo Mountain will go from District Five to District Four. And then we go to Ranches Nate. We have eighty-one Ranches North. Will go from District One to District Three. We'll wait just a second for a catch-up there. And then also Ranches South, uh, eighty-four will go from District One to District Three. And that is the last of the changes, uh, from the current for district, excuse me, Scenario D One. After we've seen that, we'll check the demographics for this scenario. And you'll check first the target populations. You'll see that all of the populations are within the target. Next thing is the total population changes. You'll see that for each one of the districts. Then again, the right, far right-hand lines will show where the, the amounts were and what was either gained or lost for each population. The same for total voting population. All right, as your lines showing where it was. And then where it is now with the new scenario. And then the same for registered voters. Great. Thank you Nate. With that, we'll go to Scenario D Two. Okay, again, we'll start inside a inset of Flagstaff where our precincts are, have higher population. We'll start with Precinct Eight in Flagstaff will go from District One to District Two. Then we'll go to Precinct Eighteen in Flagstaff, which will go from District Two to District Four. Then we'll go to, to Precinct Nineteen in Flagstaff. It'll go from District Two to District Four. Then we'll go to Precinct Twenty in Flagstaff, which will go from District Three to District Two. Nate, then we'll go to Cameron. Which is Precinct Forty Three Cameron will go from District Four to District Five. Thanks Nate. Then we go to Fernwood, which is Precinct Fifty Two. Fernwood will go from District Two to District Five. Then we'll go to Grand Canyon up to the north, which is Precinct Fifty Nine. Precinct Fifty Nine Grand Canyon will go from District One to District Five in Scenario Two, D Two. Then we're back up to the north to inscription house, Precinct Sixty One. Sixty One precinct for inscription house will go from District Five to District Four. And Precinct Sixty Three at Mormon Lake down to the south will go from District Four to District Three. And we're back up to Navajo Mountain Nate, which is Precinct Seventy One Navajo Mountain will go from District Five to District Four. Next one to Ranches, Precinct Eighty One Ranches North will go from District One to District Three. And Precinct Eighty Four Ranches South will go from District One to District Three. And that is the last change from the current on Scenario D Two. We'll go to Scenario E. Oh, I apologize. Thanks Nate. I apologize. We need to check our target populations uh, for, uh, Scenario D Two. We see that they're all within the ranges. Then we'll look at total population changes with Scenario D Two from the current. And we look at total voting population for Scenario D Two. And the total registered voters, voters by party affiliation. Thanks Nate. Thanks for catching me there. And then we'll go to Scenario E. Thank you. And we'll start at Precinct Eleven Nate. Um, Flagstaff Precinct Eleven in Flagstaff will go from, excuse me, I'm, I'm incorrect. I read my thing wrong. That's ten actually Nate. And you knew that. Uh, Precinct Ten in Flagstaff will go from District One to District Two. Thank you. And then we'll go to Flagstaff Sixteen. It will go from District Two to District One. Then we're at Flagstaff Eighteen, which will go from District Two to District Four. Thank you. Then we'll go from Precinct Twenty Three in Flagstaff. There we go. Precinct Twenty Three will go from District Three to District Two. Then we'll go to Flagstaff Twenty Nine. Flagstaff Precinct Flagstaff Twenty Nine will go from District One to District Three. Then we go to Blue Ridge Nate. Precinct Forty One in Blue Ridge will go from District Four to District Two under Scenario E. Then we go back up to Cameron Nate. Precinct Forty Three in Cameron will go to District, from District Four to District Five. Forty Three in Cameron. And we go to Fernwood Nate. Precinct Fifty Two in Fernwood will go from District Two to District Four. And Fifty Three in Forest Lakes. Precinct Fifty Three in Forest Lakes will go from District Four to District Two. Then we go to Grand Canyon Nate. Back north to Precinct Fifty Nine in Grand Canyon. It will go from District One to District Five under Scenario E. Then we go to Sixty Three at Mormon Lake, back down south. Precinct Sixty Three at Mormon Lake will go from District Four to District Two under Scenario E. Then we go to Ranches Nate. Precinct Eighty One Ranches North will go from District One to District Three in Scenario E. And eighty-four, Precinct Eighty Four Ranches South will go from District One to District Three under Scenario E. That's the final changes for Scenario E. And then we'll look at the demographics. And you see again that all of the changes under E for population meet the targets. And then we look at the total population changes with the deviation from the original on the far right. And you see that in total voting populations. And then finally, the final column, registered voters by party affiliation. Thank you. Thanks. And our final draft scenario is Scenario F. We'll start there. And we'll start with Precinct Eight in Flagstaff. Precinct Eight in Flagstaff will go from District One to District Two under Scenario F. Then Precinct Ten in Flagstaff will go from District One to District Two. Then Flagstaff Eighteen will go from District Two to District Four. Then District Twenty, excuse me, Precinct Twenty Three will go from District Three to District Four. That's also in Flagstaff. Then we're at Blue Ridge Nate. Precinct Forty One in Blue Ridge will go from District Four to District Three. Then we have Cameron. Which is Forty Three Cameron Precinct Forty Three will go from District Four to District Five. And Fernwood. Precinct Fifty Two Fernwood will go from District Two to District Five under F. Then we have Precinct Fifty Three in Forest Lakes. Precinct Fifty Three in Forest Lakes will go from District Four to District Three under F. Then we have going north to inscription house. Precinct Sixty One in inscription house will go from District Five to District Four. Then you have Precinct Sixty Three at Mormon Lake. Going south. Precinct Sixty Three at Mormon Lake will go from District Four to District Three. Then back up north to Navajo Mountain. Navajo, Precinct Seventy One and Navajo Mountain will go from District Five to District Four. And the final change on F will be Ranches South Eighty Four. Precinct Eighty Four Ranches South will go from District One to District Three. Looking for eighty-four and the number's yet to pop up. So, there we go. There we go. So, um, that is the final change for Scenario F. With that, we'll go to demographics for Scenario F. And note the changes to population are within target under this scenario. And the second column, which is total population. Next column, which is total voting population. And finally, registered voters by party affiliation for Scenario F. Thanks Nate. Thank you. Mr. County Manager, that concludes the changes to the scenarios.
Thank you Sue. Thank you Nate. Um, Nate, you can go and unshare your screen. I want to go back to, uh, go, want to go back to one other thing before we, uh, take comments. But I want to go back and share my screen to show you, uh, where to find our, our storyboard. And so you can see, uh, I'm showing our website, coconino dot A Z dot gov. You can scroll down to popular links and go to redistricting twenty twenty-two. And then it'll take you to our, to our redistricting storyboard. And we call it a storyboard because it is just that. It's, it's just a lot of information that creates various, uh, opportunities to look and do some studying on your own. So redistricting twenty twenty-two. It takes you across to what's redistricting, the impacts of redistricting, uh, why the changes are needed. And then, uh, very importantly, information that Sue and Nate just covered with you. So you're able to, and this is a very simple tool, even I can use it. That's how simple it is. Uh, click anywhere to interact, uh, but you're, you can zoom in. The first tab are the current boundaries. And then the, the other tabs go over each of the scenarios that, that Nate and Sue covered for you. Also, to the left is the, is the dashboard. Uh, and you can click on the arrow box here and it'll, it'll enlarge the size of the demographics to be able to look at the ranges, the population, the voting age population, as well as the voter affiliation by party. And so this is very important. You can X out of that. Uh, and then just again, just go right through each of the scenarios. We have the, uh, rules for redistricting that we covered. Um, and then also down below, uh, we have supplemental information. So the map packet again, is the distillation in PDF format of all the information we're covering here, including the various scenarios. And so that's a, that's an important piece. You can also look at, uh, the information that Sue was covering. And so you can go by, by these scenarios, by the precincts and identifying, we, we've highlighted the, the precincts that are going to be changing. And then the legend here, which is good, shows, uh, the different colors in, in, in which the, the, the precinct may have changed and the reason why. Could have had a boundary change. A split may have occurred because of legislative or congressional line was laid down. And so again, more information for you to look at and, and, and create, uh, you know, your own, your own awareness and your, and your, and your information on this area. Uh, and so we also have, uh, the opportunity for individuals, and this is, uh, has population, the precinct's already drawn in. And, you know, you can certainly take a, take a whack at, at, uh, creating a scenario that in order to better understand what we're presenting here today. So again, there's a lot of information here. The timeline we covered, uh, from the stem, from the standpoint of how this rolls up into the adoption of maps, uh, on April 12th. And then the public input process and the dates and FAQs. Always get to understand the differences in some areas by, by going over FAQs. So again, more information for, for, for you all to look at. Um, and then you're able to, um, you're able to now to see my PowerPoint. I've gone back to the PowerPoint. Uh, let me go back actually to do that again, just to make sure. So the PowerPoint, um, just want to get into, we're now at the public comment portion. So for individuals that would like to ask any questions or make any statements, uh, you can use your race hat function, uh, to, to make sure that we can see who you are. If you're on the phone, uh, you can do the same thing by pressing star nine. And then, uh, when called upon, you just state your name, uh, add address. And then we ask for comments to be, uh, no more than three minutes of more information. So uh, with that, uh, we are ready to begin, uh, the opportunity for individuals to provide input on what you've heard today. Um, I do want to make sure. I will. There's one other slide I want to cover before we leave. But anyway, I want to stop this, stop the share and making sure that we can see any activity from individuals that would like to raise any questions or comments at this time. Also, um, very quickly, uh, uh, for the comments that we have received, we will be posting instead of, uh, we, we, uh, we're going to be posting the comments that we receive on the website, on the storyboard. Uh, and so, so you'll be able to go over, uh, the comments that we've received thus far uh, from members of the public. And so, uh, please do not forget, and we'll make sure we post it on the website. Uh, so you're able to find those easily, readily, easily, uh, for you to see. So again, all the comments that we've received will roll up each time, each time we have, uh, one of the sessions, we'll roll it up into, uh, a public comment and put, put, post it on the website. So. With that, uh, let's see, Trey, uh, any comments that we need to be looking at?
Uh, Mr. County Manager, it looks like we have, uh, one from, uh, Joan Jamison. Forty-six, sixty-eight. Winsong, Flagstaff. Um, I'm assuming it's eight, six, zero, zero, four. There is no city on that.
Okay. Um, and thank you Joan. You are, you are here today. Um, uh, I can answer your question. Um, you know, with regard to the, the changes, why did inscription house in Navajo Nation switch with Cameron and Grand Canyon? Uh, under a couple of scenarios, um, we do provide the, uh, we're, we're, we're trying to balance the population. And so some of the scenarios change, uh, depending on. we're, we're, we're trying to balance the population, and so some of the scenarios change, uh, depending on, on precincts. But, uh, when we're looking at specific precincts, we're looking at the population, and how we can look at the population and switch those precincts from one district to the other, uh, to, to see if we can create a scenario where we'd come to, come as close to that target population within that five or ten percent. So it is, it is, um, mainly driven in terms of a population balance, but same time, we're, we're looking at the guidelines. We're looking at all of the six, seven guidelines that we've adopted to ensure that, uh, the changes that we've made, uh, can, uh, pass or, or, or can qualify, if you will, uh, from, from with regard to the, uh, the, the, the guidelines that we've adopted. Uh, Joan, did you want to ask any other questions? Well Joan, if you could unmute yourself.
Yeah, I did. Okay, sorry about that. I didn't know what status my microphone was at.
Okay, we can hear loud and clear.
Alrighty. Well, it just seems, looking at your criteria, population was the first one you mentioned, of course. But, um, there's also, um, traditional geography, and it seems, I don't know, looking at the maps, that Inscription House and, uh, Navajo Mountain was more, well, they're contiguous, but it seems like they're closer to, uh, the rest of Group Five.
Mm-hmm, District Five.
Or whereas Cameron and, well, Cameron in particular is closer to the rest of Four.
Okay.
So it seems like, in terms of the, uh, maybe it's the communities of interest, maybe it's whether or not they're contiguous or traditional geography. Those seem a little odd to me.
Okay.
Thank you. You can mute me.
And thanks for your comments, because we will post, because those are questions that we want to make sure we capture as a public comment. We appreciate that, that comment. So thank you for being here today. Other comments or questions? I don't see raised hand. While we are waiting, I'm going to go back to sharing my screen. I want to go back over a couple of items very quickly, and we'll come back to, to, to this portion. What we're also doing is, let me go back up to. So, uh, again, the county website, uh, for, to go to the comments. Uh, we are also, uh, streaming, uh, through YouTube, and so we've created, and Claire, correct me if I'm wrong, Trey. We've created a playlist on supervisory just redistricting, or twenty-twenty-two supervisory redistricting. And this is on YouTube, and for individuals that are not here today, and, and to, to go out, uh, do the search, and they're able to play back, uh, the proceedings from today. Is that correct Trey?
Yes, Steve, and if you click on that link on your PowerPoint, it will take you to that playlist, so that, so that if you got a control click. But if you control click, it will take you to the YouTube playlist, so that, and if you continue sharing your screen, uh, just for attendees to get a look at that, if you want.
Can you see it? Because I, I thought I did, I just did that.
I don't think so. I think it's still sharing the screen that your PowerPoint is on.
Let me do this.
The technical difficulties we've experienced here this morning, as you know, uh, this is the first of four meetings, public meetings that we are having, uh.
We have the audio Steve.
I know.
We don't have the visual.
We have the audio. I was like Patrice.
I know, really.
That is not me. That, that, that is the other me, from a different dimension.
Just to show the public that you go back and replay this and rehear it and resee it again. So again, that, that's another way to do it. So going back to any other questions or comments from the public? Again, we will post all of the comments, including yours Joan. Thanks for being here today to provide that observation uh, to the website. And what'll happen for those individuals that are here today, and that may be playing this back through YouTube, uh, the board is going to be receiving, and, and, and of course, we're capturing the documentation and the record that shows what your observations and your, and your comments and your question and your concerns are. And we will, and the board is going to be, you know, of course, as, as they're here today, uh, uh, taking into account the feedback you're providing, uh, that will provide the opportunity for them during their deliberation. So uh, when we get to that final, um, public hearing, uh, opportunity, uh, that's where, uh, the board will then take it from there. Uh, they will, uh, uh, take into account all of the information that they've been provided with from you. And then they will then deliberate and come to conclusion on, on the mapping scenario to adopt on April twelfth. And so that would be the, 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 uh, the process from here. Okay, and Joan also made a suggestion to find vertical lines on charts when hovered over. So yeah, we will make that, we'll take that into account. So again, um, Madam Chair, I think we are at the point, uh, where we have, uh, provided the opportunity, the information, website information, and of course, the message, the strong message, uh, the, the community, the County Board of Supervisors wants to hear from the community. Go back to you, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you. And, and I want to, uh, thank, of course, my colleague, members of Board of Supervisors, uh, who are here this afternoon, uh, members of the public. Thank you so much for tuning in and, uh, for providing your comments. And again, please feel free to provide your written comments online as well. And the staff, you all have really done a tremendous job. This has been uh, difficult, and thank you so much for all of your help. Uh, Recorder Hanson, appreciate you being with us this afternoon as well. So with that, uh, it's, uh, almost five o'clock. Again, wish you all a happy St. Patty's Day, and, uh, have a great evening. So, thank you very much.
Thanks everybody. Take care.